And of course, the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-80E, South Carolina Code 1987 is amended. All the media in the immediate area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer by Ms. Gore and all by the pledge by Ms. Kelly.
Let us all bow, please. Father God, we thank you for this day, and this is a beautiful day on today. As we gather here, oh God, we ask you, Lord God, to help this meeting, God. Help us, help us make wise decisions, God, and help us do what is right for the Dallas County history. God, we ask you to look upon everyone here, look upon our teachers, our principals, and most of all, look upon our students. In your name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the temple with liberty and justice.
Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
A move.
I got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. This moves us on to our general discussion items. Dr. Newman.
Chair Hassler, members of the board, and members of our audience, this is a special call meeting, but primarily it's a work session. It's a special call meeting because we do have one action item where we have for contracts that have to be approved. But other than that, we do have items on our list for the work session, and the first item I have on my list is the eclipse. And so I know that I had been sharing some information with the board through the board brief, and some other items that are going on there, and so I just kind of wanted to update where we are at this point in time, is that there does not appear to be anybody in our area that is doing anything different, other than being in school for that particular day. And so we had been waiting to see what some other folks were doing. Looks like a lot of the upstate districts are doing an e-learning day. But at this point in time, the Midlands, the Columbia districts, all seem to be on board with staying in school for that particular day, regular school day. We have not heard from our neighbors down south or anybody else to anything different at this point in time. So when I polled our principals, principals meeting we had, and we talked through this a little bit about, you know, if we were going to do anything, what would be, what would that look like? And we talked through that, but at the end of that discussion, I said that we will make sure to be doing what everybody around us at this point in time is doing. And so at this time, it is going to be a regular school day.
You mean e-learning or something not coming to school in the purpose? But not coming to school would be...
Yeah, so the districts that are doing an e-learning day, the concern was over that elementary students are dismissing that time that it's going on. And so there was some concern about supervision of students and what they may or may not do, right? Because they're going to be riding on buses at the time this is going on. And so that, I think that was a concern for those particular areas.
Okay, I didn't know if it's for reasons of observing or what it was, but I was sitting there thinking, you know, it's all great, and I can now understand because of the timing. But again, the imposition it is for parents at the last minute to say, kids are going to e-learning. Guys, I mean, they've got a job, there's no exceptions there, and that's a hardship on parents, I think.
It is. And, you know, certainly, we would prefer to always be in school if we can be. And, you know, the last time this happened was 2017, 2017, and, you know, there was a call made at the state level that all schools would be out. Also, it was more, I think it was 100%, it came right across this area. We were impacted by out-of-state travelers, too, where that's not an issue this time around, right? So really, we're just talking about that the main concern would be for elementary students that dismissal time.
You're talking liability issues, what we're talking about, right?
Yes, it is. It is.
Now, whether I say liability, but obligation, who's to what, and just controlling the kid, I would say it's our liability, I mean, really could be his liability.
That's a liability.
Should be, but I think it is.
Yeah. It, you know, again, it...
It has potential, right?
It has potential to be that, but... It does. And so, again, that's why we were really trying to make a decision one way or the other, because of, you know, the concerns about potential liability.
Could we dismiss them later that day, or...
Well, so we talked about, like, an early dismissal, getting the day in, for example, and then dismissing early. But again, you're coming off of spring break, you know, it's the first day we're back from spring break. And then you also, you're still going to have buses, you know, that are in, because when we dismiss early, I think elementary's like 11:15 early. So the time of impact is between, like, right at 2:00 is when it's supposed to really hit. So you're still going to have, you know, that issue with a lot of buses out on the road and everything going on. And so, you know, I think, you know, the decision comes down to, you know, you're either out or you're in. And like I, when I was speaking with our principals, you know, we want to make sure that if lots of folks are making this decision together and saying it's okay to be in school, then it's okay to be in school. And so, you know, we kept waiting, thinking that this, a lot of people would come out and announce, one way or the other, right? Yes, we're in school, no, we're not in school, but announce. But ironically, there just hasn't been a lot of people that have committed, you know, other than the upstate districts that committed to, we're going to be out. Yep, so...
So does that mean we've made our decision, or, I mean, if others around us decide to...
So as of tonight, we are planning on being in school. But the reality is, if all of a sudden, everybody else decides to be out of school around us, you know, we're impacting other folks, too. So, you know, I feel pretty comfortable at this point in time saying we are going to be in school.
And I think the other factor would be if the governor or the State Department decides to make a different decision, I think. But otherwise, I would not agree with it.
If I did anything, I don't, I wouldn't hold them for 31 minutes before you release them, you keep them all in, that age.
It sounds like that. We talked briefly about that, but it's supposed to last them to 1:00 before. So technically...
I was just looking at the time.
Yeah, yeah, you know, technically, you'd need to keep them a couple hours extra. And again, the first day after spring break, that could be challenging, too. So, you know, again, I think we were impacted a lot by a lot of people coming from out of town. That's what drove a lot of things in South Carolina back at that time. Just talking with some of my peers, you know, they brought that point up, that there was a lot more to deal with, and a decision was made at the state level.
It's got 98% chance of rain that day.
That's...
No, I'm kidding, what day, what day was that?
It's actually 35% though, so far, a little bit.
The eighth?
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at the fourth, my bad, my bad.
It is 37.
That's too far out, the day.
Yeah.
Monday, the eighth.
But, you know, like I said, I think we're all comfortable at this point, you know, in time saying that we're going to be in school. Again, if all of a sudden, there were some new legal ramifications that came up, I think that's what would change for us. So if, you know, there were other districts that immediately, you know, got new legal advice and said, okay, we're not going to do it...
What's our legal advice said?
Similar to 2017, that, you know, the challenges for supervision of young students, you know, at the time, that it's, that it's going on.
All right, so right now, plan is to follow the state?
Yes.
Majority, yes. Plan the action and...
Yep.
Can we send out a message to parents in the district, asking them to have conversations with their children?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think after night, that, you know, after the night discussing it, we wanted to be able to go ahead and send something out and say, we're planning on being in school. You know, we're going to be in school, please have conversations with your children. We're not going to go out and purchase a bunch of, you know, glasses for this, because, again, we can't supervise really what's going on at that moment.
They might encourage them to look at it, if you didn't have an officer in that.
But just wanted to update everybody, kind of where we were. We've been in a holding pattern, and again, when districts started announcing, we thought, okay, well, this will be good, it'll work its way down to us, but nobody has said anything. All right, this, and again, the only, I want to be clear, the only way I would change my mind about that day is something significantly on the legal side changed for us, so...
Or if the state changed their guidance, I guess.
From the state, yep, yep. If the state said, this is a statewide issue, then we would make a call. Okay? All right. The second item is Audrey Childers has the communication audit information for when the board needs to participate.
Yep, yep.
And so Audrey, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So part of, the next step in the audit is the focus groups, and the folks that are coming in, the auditors that are coming in, will have two focus groups for our board members, two groups of four and four, each one will last 30 minutes. And so I have several options for you guys as to when you can participate, when would work for you. I have, these are April 10th or April 11th, but we're trying to schedule April 10th. April 10th, I have one at 12:15 to 12:45, and then I have one, an option at 5:00, and another option at 5:45. So I can, I can be as flexible as you guys need, it's only 30 minutes, but I need to schedule four and four. I talked to Mrs. Hassler, and she suggested that Ms. Kelly, Mr. Morpheus, Mr. Reed, and Ms. Thompson have to worry about daytime schedules, and said that may be something you'd rather do in the evening, or not. I can work with you guys and Mr. Hass, Ms. Hassler, Mr. Govan, Mr. Jeffords, and Ms. Gore, you may have a little bit more flexibility to do something during the day if you want. But I just need to hear from you guys as to when you can come and be a part of these focus groups.
She said the 10th and the 11th.
I can do, yes, I can do on the 10th, I've got 12:15, 5:00, 5:45. On the 11th, I have 12:00, 5:00, and 5:30.
The 10th is the Day at the Capitol for those of us that are going to go to do that.
Okay, well, that solves that problem.
So I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. So I've got on the 11th, 12, I can do 12:00.
Is that for us coming together or individually?
Yes, individually, group four times.
Group four.
So it'd be 12 or 12:30, and then I can do 5 or 5:30.
Right, the 11th, I have a 1:00 document.
You would be on the 10th?
It'd be on the 3rd, yeah.
You want to do them all the same day?
No, I just, I can do two, I can do two groups. We can do one on the 10th for those not going to the Day at the Capitol, and we can do...
Oh, you probably won't. But if you went to the Capitol, yeah.
I am not, I can do either day anytime.
Okay, okay.
So whatever, you settle with everybody.
Okay, you're open anytime.
April 11th at 12:00.
I will make myself available.
Or near 12:00.
I can do, I can do the 11th at 12:00.
Okay.
Or if you need me sometime...
No, no, that's fine. You can do the 11th at 12:00, okay? I got one more slot for the 11th and 12:00.
You said, well, that's how long?
30 minutes.
Can we do the 11th?
I could do it at 11:00.
For 5:30 on the 11th, whatever works for everybody else. 5:30 would be awesome, but I could go with 5:00, that's what everybody else...
How about 5:15? Can we do 5:15?
Sure, we can, we can negotiate for 5:15.
That gives me 15, if I do 30 minutes, that gives me 15 as 4:00, 6:00.
Who's less, though? I mean, does that work for everybody else?
That gives us, Ms. Kelly, and Mr. Morpheus, and Mr. Reed, and you. So can we do 5:15 on the 11th?
I'm going to, there's a chance I can't do it either day.
Okay, okay.
My stint at Harris has been back a few days, I was supposed to go Sunday, now I've got to go. But I don't know if it's, but 5:15 Thursday would be the most likely, but I may not even make it.
Okay. So I've got Ms. Hassler, Mr. Govan, Mr. Jeffords, and Ms. Gore at 12:00 on the 11th, and then I've got Ms. Kelly, Mr. Morpheus, Mr. Reed, and Ms. Thompson, with everything working out, at 5:15.
Where will we meet?
It's going, okay, so we're going to be in the Darlington Library in their meeting room.
Across from the annex.
Across from the annex, so it's the Darlington Library meeting room. And I'll send you calendar invites and everything else, it'd be great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Audrey. Next item on the list is, we have been doing research and starting to put together what the Elementary Gifted and Talented Program would look like. And as we talked about at the last few meetings, that this, what we're trying to put together is a team of teachers that will travel to students versus putting students on a bus and having them go somewhere. There are challenges, I know at one time in the past, we did that, but there's challenges with transportation costs, time that kids are on a bus, that they wouldn't be able to be served, there's a lot of different things. And so we've done some research, we've talked to another district that currently has this program in place with Traveling Teachers for GT, and...
Which district is that?
And so we actually had a couple meetings with them, first phone calls, and then we had a Zoom meeting, talking to them about what this looks like with their schedules for the teachers and schools and everything else. So, Mrs. King, I think you've got some information to kind of share about what the draft proposal looks like at this point in time?
Right, I'm going to just give you a framework. We've spoken with the members of Georgetown, and our coordinator, Ms. Marissa Johnson, is the one that would oversee and supervise this program. She currently supervises all gifted and talented programs at this time. But anyway, she has put a framework together based on all of the information that Dr. Newman just shared with you, and it is literally that, a framework. It's not the exact schedule, but what she has is the numbers of students in each school from grades two to five, and then she has listed out which teachers may serve those students. The teachers would rotate to those schools, and she's listed also the time slots that should be considered. So though, right now, the state only requires that we focus in the areas of ELA and math, but she has added a science component in it as well. And so what we're kind of suggesting is that the teach, the students would work with the teacher in a pull-out at their school, and we don't have this here, but we've had conversation about possibly bringing the students together district-wide, maybe quarterly or twice a quarter, so that they then collaborate with other students across the district. We talked in here about possibly moving students by bus on a regular to like an alert center, but we know that that's going to be a major cost. It would be cheaper to move the teachers around and then possibly bring the students together for maybe a culminating activity, maybe twice a quarter, or maybe more if we can afford it. So the curriculum has also been listed, because there would be a focus again on ELA and math, and then we also talked about again the science component. It would be inquiry-based, and one other thing we did last year with Dr. Newman was we had the opportunity to visit the governor's school and talk with their personnel about possible partnerships. They, they said that they would love to partner with us and work with this particular program. They would also work to train our teachers. So it would be a wonderful idea to get a partnership with the governor's school so that teachers experience the professional development, as well as have certain types of activities that our children could participate with. And for the most part, or one other part that we did talk about was the fact that there are other issues, sometimes social issues, that students, gifted students deal with, and we definitely want to make sure that we have our counselors involved with the students, so that they are addressing any concerns or issues they may deal with, so that they will be well-rounded. We want to deal with stations, also so the students begin to practice more speaking, using technology, and possible challenging type games like chess, or the creation of gamified, digital game, uh, digital gamification, there we go. And so in the end, we're looking at a type of pro, this is just a framework that Ms. Johnson has put together, and we kind of talked that with Dr. Newman. There's nothing set in stone, but this, again, is just an idea of how we would serve our students, okay?
You want to talk about the time that each student would participate?
So she has drafted in here that early, that the students in grades two through, through two and three would possibly see our teachers three hours a week, once a week, and the fourth and fifth graders would do five hours per week. So it would be a pull-out session where students would literally go and do with, deal with activities that primarily meet their needs.
When you say meet their needs, are you talking about gifted and talented?
Yes.
What are you, how are you describing their need?
So, so students are tested just like any other student, right? And you'll find out what areas they're gifted in, and you work again to continue to...
So we're trying to break up areas, or we, you're trying to accentuate their strengths?
That's right.
Opposite of what we're...
That's right. You continue to build on their gifts.
And so you're talking about X hours a week, basically once a week, so your three hours and your five hours would be in one session, one day?
Yes.
Okay. Good. I just wonder how often it's going to make an impact, how long between sessions for reiterating what you went over? And then, I guess, I get it, the cost, without question, I just wonder sometimes, like with Mayo and other schools, when you're surrounded with similar interests, so to speak, that's part of the learning process, of being around those that stimulates you, et cetera, in those areas. I think that's probably something we'll miss, I think, with this format. Again, you're trying to just put something in place, I get it, but if we're looking for pros and cons, I would think that would be a definite con, because I do think that that's an important element of getting that together.
Are you referring to having the students together?
Yeah.
And we talked about that a little bit, and so that's kind of, that's kind of why we, but it doesn't fix it, but that's why we kind of talked about possibly having times where they come together, whether it be quarterly or a couple of times a quarter, they will learn specific skills at their school, bring those skills there, and then do some collaboration with other students. But again, that doesn't fix it, it does just attempt to address them.
I guess the most important thing is, I don't want it to look too, to look, I don't want to do it to say that we're doing it. Whatever program you put in place, whatever it takes to measure that it's having an impact and making a difference, otherwise, don't do it.
Right.
You know, I hate to say it, now, is that three, five hours once a week? I don't know, I'm not here to answer that, I just, I don't know what others have done, where they've seen success. I just caution that.
Yeah, I'm actually very excited about the program, because it's, what they're doing is project-based learning, they're doing the William and Mary, I mean, they're doing some really neat things that are going to spark and push the students that are identified for this. And this is just the jumping off point, right? So we, this is the start, and if we see where we need to bring them together more, certainly we'll do something like that. But I think, especially for fourth and fifth graders, five hours a week of, you know, intensive project-based learning and enhancing what they're currently doing, I think that's a great starting point.
Is it the same teacher that's dealing with them, the same time?
Yep, not changing.
Right. True.
If you go back and look at the history of doing this, you'll realize that this is not new. We did the same thing years ago in Dalton County and across the state, when we first started talking about the gifted and talented. And they removed from that to having it at Coker College, they removed from having it at Coker College to using the part of the old Butler. So it's not, it's not something, what she suggests, or what she's saying is really not a new concept. Number two is, my own concern would be, when we did the gifted and talented before, and I don't remember at what point they incorporated the arts, because the arts does become, or can become a part of the gifted and talented program. And at some point, I would like to see that incorporated into it, since we don't have the school for the arts, per se.
I mean, sorry, excuse me, I agree with the arts. A lot of kids that are gifted also are gifted in arts, right? Math and art go, like, math and music go together, math, I mean, are these kinds of things a lot of times do, so, yes, to that. But I really want to reiterate what Mr. Morpheus said, my kids were at schools where my son was the only gifted and talented student in his class, and my daughter was one of three. It was useless, it was useless to be a one gifted and talented student in a class. So if you have situations like that, I would suggest that we try to bring some schools together or do something to address that, because otherwise, you're not serving all students equally across the district. Because, you know, a group, a project-based curriculum requires interaction.
With one person, right, right, right.
And you have to be able to interact with other students, so it, yeah, I would be very cautious of that.
So that's, one of the conversations that we had is, where we've got onesies or twosies, that we would figure out possibly how to get them at the closest location.
Yeah, bring some, like, geographically close together or something.
Because we've got some schools that have 19 of those students, and we have some schools that have two.
Right.
Right, so it would, it would definitely make sense to get them in situations.
So it's not an equal opportunity for everybody if you do it that way. But, I mean, I get it, and we do need to address this, because it's not being done. I mean, it hasn't been done well for a while, I mean, in my humble opinion, but in my opinion as a parent, let me say it put that way. So, I mean, I'm glad we're trying to address it, I think, you know, the idea of having some programs on a quarterly basis or something, because when you bring all those kids in the district together, I mean, think of like the music program at Coker, you know, or the fifth grade choir, like, anytime you bring all those kids that are talented in something together, like, you really can build, like, something sort of special, so I, I like that, too, so those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I just, also, so you'll have some of the same students that are at those programs that you just mentioned, because those are students that have been identified for their artistic gifts.
Yep.
You'll have some of those same students that would be participating in this, and it would be great, like you said, then, to see how we can fuse the two. So that would be a great thing, because there are students then who would, they would then use both gifts, hopefully, to do their project-based learning activities. Yes.
Leah?
So I've got two questions, kind of, so initially, I thought we were talking about a group setting, and then I thought maybe we were talking about an individual setting, but, I mean, at the same school, the second and third graders that from that school would be together, and, but is there any overlap between like the second and third and fourth and fifth, or it's totally independent times of each other?
So one of the things that we would do is look with the principal on how to set that schedule up, because a number of them have different schedules. We want the time slots, when I say time slots, so if third graders are going to meet, let's say, what can we say, three, three hours, we want to look... We wanna look to make sure that they have that three hours and it's isolated time for that. Nothing else is interfering with it. But some of their schedules are just very different in how they set it up. So we would have to work with them on what that looks like.
But is the second grade with the third graders?
It may depend on the number of students in the building.
Can be.
Right, yes.
Because that's kinda like the Montessori concept and you can have certain planes.
And so then, the second question is, is so, is this like a way back in the day, I mean, for the year, we would have like a, like one year we learned about, I mean, a whole topic. And that's kinda like, we did different things throughout the year that were all around. I mean, is that what this, I mean, it was kinda like a curriculum?
So, yes, so what we were talking, Dr. Newman and I were talking about earlier, also with Ms. Johnson, is that if they do have that partnership with the governor's school, we could tap into those different subjects. There are subjects I know specifically at the governor's school that does, they do forensics, they do, of course, coding. They do different things and if we could set up the pathway so that the curriculum addresses that in different areas, we can then tap into their love or their interest at those different areas. Then, and you never know, there may be a child who needs to be exposed to it and then develop a love for it. So we want them, we don't wanna just take one area and say everybody has to do this in that area because the science that they're doing would lend to them being able to implement the things that they're learning also into the gifted and talented program projects. So, it just kinda depends on where they are and what the curriculum looks like so that we can infuse it all together. It's gonna be major that the teachers that work in this program talk with the teachers that teach them daily because you don't want them to do something separate in isolation. You want them to be able to apply the things that they learn in regular class as well as their general A-class as well. I mean, take this to another level, take their learning to another level.
But that sounds like more like we're gonna specifically develop a criteria per, I mean, it's not gonna be like across the district like a, that is, everybody's gonna kinda be working on the same kind of stuff, but just maybe different approaches based on the.
The teachers will plan together, those four teachers will plan. And so, like in a project-based learning, they may spend three weeks on a forensics, you know, and each, you know, grade level will have a little bit different. But we're doing forensics for these projects for the next three weeks. And then the next project, it'll be a different area.
So everybody kinda be working on the same.
But everybody be kinda working on the same thing, the teachers will be planning together. And again, working, embedding the governor's school in this, they'll also, will be focused on the same things.
Have we got any data from Georgetown, how long they, have they been doing it?
Yes, the program's been in place there for approximately three years. And I, I will double-check, there's a couple of the districts that also are doing this. So I'll get the names of those districts as well. But, very well received and I think the biggest part is, if y'all remember back in the day, the GT curriculum was the William and Mary curriculum. And you may or may not know that, but that was kinda what they used universally. And what was interesting, talking with some other districts about this, is that it's good to have a curriculum, but it's also really good to focus on the project-based learning because that's really what, where these students flourish. You know, getting the chance to kind of explore and get a chance to, you know, to address problems, right? And so, for those three weeks, they're, they're gonna have their own little problem that they're, you know, seeking answers to and building on. So, but yeah, it's been, it has been very successful. And their numbers, you know, again, as they, as they test in, you can add to the numbers. But think of other spinoffs too. I mean, if you've got these four, you know, experts in the district that are focused on this, I think that's gonna help the schools that they're in as well, generate some new ideas for those teachers.
What, what are we using to screen for the GT students?
That there's a state test that they.
When is that administered?
So they have the opportunity to, the parents can start signing up for them in September. I think they, I don't wanna say what the date is, but.
Because my question is, it used to be administered in the second grade, so how are you gonna include second graders when they haven't been identified?
So they won't be in it until they're identified. So, or, but yeah, so we could go back now. There, there's also sometimes, they will allow for a district to create trial placement as well. And that would be based off of whatever criteria we have, nine times out of ten, it would be MAP. But they allow for, they, they test the students, excuse me, with the gifted and talented standardized test, Iowa COGAT testing. And once they do that, then the other time, you can also do trial placement, they have allowed MAP or whatever standard, whatever non-reference test you have, they do allow for you to do a trial placement. So the state does allow for that.
There's, there have been times where kids have been retested.
Oh, I know that, I mean, a lot of times they're retested in third grade because, I mean, I, it's not all children are performing. I mean, in second grade, I mean, at their potential. So, I mean, it's, I mean.
So you said, how do you bring that second grade population in? That's what, how do you get them at the beginning of the year, that's what you're saying?
I mean, you, you said we're gonna have a second and third grade class. I don't know how you, you haven't tested them, so how are you gonna, how are you gonna have second graders?
Right, if they could be identified for a trial placement or, or they could start infusing it some of it based on if they have, or they're very high performing, eighty percentile, you know, nine times.
What are you testing with for eighty percentile?
Like MAP.
So our first graders are, are doing MAP testing?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's, I think we're, I think we're really pushing it to be able to truly identify them. I mean, you know some kids, but I just don't know that you're gonna, you're gonna screen for all of them.
Traditionally, parents could challenge it, like, right, if they thought their kid should be in the gifted and talented program and they didn't test it. But, you know, how are, what, you know, me, I'm always looking for other ways to, to, you know, not every kid tests well. Doesn't mean they're not. You know, how do we, how do we make sure that all the kids that have this potential to be part of this?
So we do allow for that, like you said, parents can challenge it. We do look, we don't, we don't use just grades, okay? So that doesn't happen. A lot of children do perform better when it comes to the regular classwork, but unfortunately.
Teachers could, could identify students that they think should be part of it or something, there could be some other way.
The only students that are, are accepted by the state are those that have those scores, okay? Because there's funding that comes with it. So they're not gonna fund kids that have not been identified by those screeners. So we'd have to use some type of test.
And, yeah, so fund, the state's gonna fund this basically and they funded this to, to some extent, right?
I was about to say.
To some extent, yeah.
Underfunded.
It's underfunded, but there's a little bit of a piece that gets funded by the state and that's all driven off of those test scores.
Well, I think we've gotta do something with students for a long.
In elementary school.
In elementary school, I mean, for a long time, we have not been certifying these students.
I could also see this getting, like, you're talking about spinoffs. My mind's just kind of like the, you know, the business group, like, expect, wanna come back and be an engineer at Sunoco, not go, you know, or whatever, and then, you know, different kinds of, all sorts of different little spinoffs. Mentoring when the high school students come and talk to the elementary school students, like so many different things that you could partner with some other objective that we have. Anyway, sorry.
What about schools, those schools that may have a large number of tests for gifted? Is it not possible to allow them to do more and keep them on campus and have the teachers there?
Yeah, so, so it's driven by the amount of students that, you know, the time that a teacher is there. So, there could be a school that has a large population and only one teacher serves that school and they stay there.
And that's what I'm saying, they get together, again, feeding off one another, getting that interaction. Again, I just think that interaction is key among the students.
Yep, all students, but especially those. So, the, you know, the, the hope and desire is that it grows. I, I think to, you know, to Wanda's point that, you know, we haven't been doing anything. And I've talked to a lot of other superintendents about this and they're not doing anything. And so, when I've mentioned, hey, we're thinking about doing this, I mean, there's a lot of people that are saying, we need to do something, you know. So there's, I think the interest will be there and it's, again, it's a starting point. I think this will evolve as we get into it, the times of it that we're using, how much time the students are spending, how many times they come together. All that's to be determined as we get it going.
So, when, when are we posting for these positions and what is the qualifications? I mean, are there certifications that they're, that these teachers will have to have?
There are.
Et cetera, so are we gonna, do we have time to get them certified, et cetera?
So while Mrs. King is handing out the literature that she's got for you all, I'll talk a little bit about the handoff piece. So, we were planning on briefing the board tonight and posting tomorrow for these positions because it's important to get these folks on board before the end of the school year so we can start the planning. Because we wanna definitely, you know, start the planning process. You have to be GT certified in order to teach GT students. So there is a certification, it's an add-on certification. There are a lot of teachers in the Dalton County School District that are certified GT because that was one of the professional development, development opportunities for teachers a while back. Can you talk about?
So, we have had a pretty good partnership with Coker and they have offered courses for teachers. We pay for them over the time. We have not offered one, I don't think, recently. We did pay for it for a couple of years. And so we asked principals to make sure that if they had teacher that we put in those courses, that they kept them in classes or make sure those groups of students were served by them. So we've offered the opportunity for teachers to get the GT endorsement for a number of years. It's time for us to pick it up again, yes. And like I said, Coker has been very helpful in offering that course for us.
Is there a stipend for this?
There is not, this is their job. So, so instead of being in a classroom, in a regular classroom setting in a school, this would be their teaching. But now there would, you know, obviously we're gonna pay for travel expenses, supplies, those types of things.
So, you think based on this number of students, we need four teachers? That's a lot of, poor town, people, sixty-six students.
Well, if you think about these students in project-based learning, it's small classes. It is, it's small class sizes. And so, you know, it, it is, that's typically what you wanna look at is somewhere between that twelve to fifteen for a given section. Again, if we're pulling these students together, gotta remember that in a day's time, and obviously some of these numbers are larger, but, but where the smaller numbers are, we're talking about figuring out how to get them to the closest location and anticipate to.
Well, it's not sixty-six, did you say sixty, it's, it's not six, that's just fifth grader.
Right, that's right.
So it's like a hundred, it's like a hundred and thirty students. Hundred and fifty students to be included, second grade.
And just curious, Carolina Dornal looks like it's served by one North Oxford Bay, were the two largest. Is that kind of a disproportionate for those teachers?
You know, again, they'll be spending more time in that one school where the other ones will be spending more time in several schools, okay? So where you've got a larger population, you'll see that same teacher stay in that location versus getting to other schools around. But where there's smaller populations, those teachers will be trapped. There, you know, before, I can remember years ago, parents would always make sure their child was tested for this, but if there's no opportunity.
Well, I mean, it's like, what's the program, there's no program really, so.
So I think this will help drive some of those numbers. And, 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 you know, again, if, if you're looking at the fourth and fifth grade, there's, you know, a hundred and nine students across. Typically, those classes, you're gonna see probably, like I said, twelve, fifteen kids per.
Parents don't have to opt into this, right? Like, don't the students get tested regardless?
Yes.
Okay.
So at second grade, they test all of them after then.
After that, you have to.
And, and so a lot of times, teachers make contact with parents if they see potential.
Right, I was gonna say, there's gotta, parents have to be educated in that in order to know how to do.
Yeah, we wanna generate.
I just think it's a good program, a good start. You know, like the point that you're looking at the holistic child.
And right now, this is just a framework, yes ma'am. This does not have any of the specifics there, like Dr. Newman was saying, there are more specifics that will have to be decided. This is just an overall framework.
I wanna play chess in my GT class. Also learn about green pollen.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. King. And I will give a shout-out again to the governor's school that they have been very open with the school district about wanting to partner with us on, on ways that they can interact with us and our students and our teachers. And I'll also mention, after the presentation we gave on the ASCEND program to the chamber, Mr. Dorser approached me right afterwards and said, we'd love to help you guys with ASCEND with the eighth grade students too. So I just think this is another opportunity to, you know, to connect with the top school in South Carolina, actually.
Right here in our county.
Number one in the state, so. All right. The next item, I know that we have some principal vacancies that were posted and I just wanted to update the board on timeline and schedules that we're looking at. So, we have currently four school vacancies that are out there and we are starting interviews this week for three of those schools. And then, the week after spring break will be the start of the fourth one, the second round of the three. My intent is to bring to the board on the April fifteenth meeting the recommendations for the new principal positions. And so, I know a lot of folks are wanting to know what that timeline looks like, especially if you're in those buildings. But I wanna be able to update the board that we should have all this wrapped up for the four schools, the fifteenth of April. And then that way, everybody knows well before the end of the year what that's gonna look like.
When are, when are contracts due?
Contracts are due May the tenth.
So teachers will know who their principal is prior to, just wanna make sure.
And then the last item I had on my list before the action item that we have, of course, is the budget update. And just kind of a, an overview of what we've been working on. What Ms. Douglas has been working on, on her side of things and information she's been getting. What I've been working on with principals and FTEs. Mr. Miller, of course, has been working with our schools on the positions as well between both sets of circumstances, which is the sunsetting of the ESAR funds and of course, the positions associated with the ESAR funds. And then also the, what I call the class size, right sizing around the district, which is, you know, due primarily to the loss of enrollment of students over the past few years. And so, and we did, I know at the, the last meeting, we had talked briefly about the hundred and thirty-fifth day. And so, did have some information that we were able to pull together recently on that. And so, our number as of today, and this, this includes the hundred and thirty, I need to explain this, the hundred and thirty-fifth day count, the technical count is only for five K through twelfth grade students. So anything you see that's associated with our district on account or any school district is only five K through twelfth. It doesn't include our four K students and our three K students. And so, what I actually wanted to make sure of is that we have a total for all of our students that we have in the district to gauge what that looks like. But as of our hundred and thirty-fifth, which was the fifteenth of March, we are showing eight thousand eight hundred and forty students.
How much again, sorry?
Eight thousand eight hundred forty.
What was the change from the, was it the ninety day?
So, so the, from the ninety day count, it's twenty-six students less. So from the forty-fifth, I'm sorry, the forty-fifth day, not the ninetyth.
You mean attending?
No, no, forty-fifth day, the forty-fifth day.
Yeah, sorry.
Forty-fifth day.
Yeah.
Sorry, confused that.
Yeah, there's not a ninety day count.
There's not a ninety day, that was me saying the wrong thing.
You got a hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five and the forty-five, those are the two that we get ADMs for the state. And so there's.
The difference, the differ, difference is only, is eight, is.
Twenty-six students.
Twenty-six students.
Yeah, between the hundred and thirty-fifth and the forty.
If you're looking at a trend, we started three K, four K when. If you're looking at a trend, we started three K, four K when?
Oh, we've, we've had those in the district.
How, like how long?
Oh, before I even got here, so.
So if we're looking five years, six years, and we didn't always have it, so that's why I'm saying, I always like to compare with and without, because when we didn't have it, we're still from greatly less.
Yeah. So just to, you know, to your point, you know, Jamie, the, the five years ago, okay, the hundred and thirty-fifth day, the same number count five years ago was nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five. So, you know, we, we are down over a thousand students in the past five years. And, you know, of course, the, the big year was the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, where we lost six hundred of those students. But yeah, unfortunately, the trend, and really if you look at the twenty-year trend, you know, for the school district, it has been declining over twenty years.
But as we learned at that, like, like, we heard that a lot at this last conference. But also, I mean, if you look at demographic data, I mean, there's just a shift out of rural areas into cities. I mean, it's an ongoing problem, I mean.
It is not uncommon to.
It's not just us, right? I mean, all rural counties in our state are.
Across the nation.
So, this eight thousand eight hundred and forty just does, or does not include?
It does.
Three K and four K.
It includes three K and four K. And so goes the ninety-eight fifty-five number.
So what's our actual report to the state number?
Okay. So that would be eighty-four fifty-seven. And that same comparison, five years ago, was ninety-four eighty-one.
Ninety-four?
Eighty-one, yeah.
So the forty-fifth day, I guess I'm a little confused again about this part, can you re-explain this part?
Yep.
So, what was that eighty-eight forty versus the eighty-four fifty-seven?
Yep, three K and four K are included.
Okay. And the eighty-eight sixty-six that you said on the forty-fifth day included their three K and four K?
That's correct.
And what's the number, equivalent number on the forty-fifth day if you don't include three K and four K?
It's twenty-six students less.
So it's still the same?
Six students more, I'm sorry, yeah, so we're.
So it's still?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's make sure we're talking about the same.
Okay, yeah, I just.
All right. Yeah, I, I, like I said, I want to give you actual numbers of all of our students, because that's what's real to me, right? That's what we get money for. You know, four K students, we, we get SURVIVE funding for that.
So we get money for three K too?
We don't get it for three K.
How many three K students do we have?
Sixty-eight.
Where did I get this from?
Um, we got thirteen at Bay Road and twenty-eight at South Side and twenty-seven at St. John's.
What determines?
I'd have lost every penny I had if somebody had asked me if we had three K somewhere.
What, what determines who?
Special needs.
Our special, our special needs three K, okay.
Okay.
Special needs students.
So we don't even get money for special needs students in three K?
I have to double-check that, but I've, I've been told we don't get any funding for three K students, do you? So, I'll double-check that.
So I guess I'm confused, so that, why, you said whenever you hear numbers, it would just be five K to twelfth grade, you would think that the numbers would be reported for how many students that the state funds?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand that.
So, so we get, we get funding for four K students, for SURVIVE students, right? Because ours are, ours meet certain income criteria for those programs.
So we get money, but not the per, the normal per student money, based on the count? The state gives us money based on this official?
Yes.
Five K to twelve?
That's right.
Count?
Yes.
We just happen to get money for our, some of our four K, because they meet criteria from another bucket to get money.
That's right. And there were, there was a time recently where there were some districts that didn't have four K students.
Gotcha.
They chose not to have those programs, or they were happy with it. But I think the, the key is, is that, and, and when I looked at the twenty-year trend, you know, the data, it's anywhere's between a hundred to two hundred-plus students over the past twenty years. Which, of course, is part of the conversation about the budget and the right sizing of, you know, classrooms in our buildings. You know, the one thing I wanted to make sure of through this process is to maintain the twenty-to-one student-teacher ratio target in elementary schools, and the twenty-five-to-one target in middle schools and high schools. There was a time when, when I first got here, we were higher than that. And so, we've heard over and over and over and over from teachers and principals and everybody, that, that that lower amount is very important, you know, to, if we can maintain that. And so, when I talk about right sizing, again, we weren't, we're not too far off from where we lost those six hundred students, and I think a lot of us thought we need to get them back. And, you know, we've been waiting, and it's obvious that they're, we're not getting them back at this point in time, so we have to make those adjustments. And so, again, you know, from the FTE conversation, I think I talked with the board, you know, at the last meeting, that we've talked with all of our principals across the district, and where there were areas that we needed, you know, less teachers, we had those discussions. So, for example, in a high school, you know, if there were X amount of sections of Spanish, I'll just say Spanish, you know, you had X amount of students that were signed up to take Spanish classes, and you had four Spanish teachers, and you really only needed three, based on the amount of students that were signing up to take Spanish. Those are the decisions that we're making at the high school level. At the middle school level, again, you know, student-teacher ratios, twenty-five to one, you know, we have some situations where we are block scheduling our core math and ELA, and that has definitely helped with our achievement data for students because of that double blocking. But of course, that creates some much less enrollment in classes, for example, social studies and science classes that we had. So, right sizing that to get it to where we can have classes of twenty-five. And, so yeah, those are the conversations, and all the principals have had those conversations with their staff. Mr. Miller's been involved with a lot of the conversations as well. And, but also, there's a plus side to this, which is where we are adding some positions, for example, the interventionists, that, that we had use of due to ESAR funds. And because of the, the right sizing of the classes, of the student-teacher ratios and the amount of classes that we have across the district, we're able to fill these interventionist positions at the elementary school levels. So, you know, the, that's, when we asked teach, excuse me, principals to prioritize what they feel like the, and the biggest plus was from the ESAR positions, the interventionist at the elementary schools was there. And then, also, some of the things that we're funding out of ESAR, for example, there were some core teachers that we were funding out of the ESAR monies, because we didn't have them at the time, and the ESAR was an easy way of having funding and not taxing the general fund for it. But those positions are, you know, necessary in order to continue forward with whether it be block scheduling at the middle school level, or, you know, some of the other positions that we have around the district. So, again, we, we've been working through the minuses and working through the pluses and the current vacancies that we have across the district. And again, you know, Mr. Miller's been compiling the lists. And at, at this time, and, you know, Mr. Miller asked you, I'll ask you to speak a little bit about this too, but at this time, it appears that we have a place for everybody currently, there's a position out there, right? May not be at the exact location where they were this year, but there is a position out there for folks based off of our vacancies, is that?
That's correct. We have, as of today, fifty-seven vacancies and fifty teachers that need a, a new location. So, it's just a matter, that's all we'll work through this week of matching up the certifications and getting the principals involved in the conversations.
Whether it be at that exact school, or whether it be a Spanish teacher, you know, at a high school, being able to be a Spanish teacher at a middle school.
That's right.
And so, you know, along with those pluses we're talking about, the interventionists, is the, the pluses of the four GT teachers too, that we're funding for the new GT program.
And I'll say, I'm sorry to interrupt you off, but several of the ones who are still looking for a place to land are GT certified, so I'm sure they'll be in the midst for that.
And then, another plus is, again, at our middle school level, I had talked about Spanish in the past, and that's always been an ask by a lot of parents for a language. And, and then also, computer science, because the standards have changed with computer science, and that's now pushing down into the middle level, to where we need to be able to, to teach that to middle school students, where it used to be high school. And so, having those two options for our middle school students as electives will help with having a place for those students to be, you know, for the loss of the positions in the building. So again, I, I wanted to make sure to update the board as far as the positions go across the district, and, and how we're looking at placing. Again, we have lists, our, you know, one of the conversations that we're having is, you know, having primarily internal vacancy postings, not external, because we have plenty of people within the district that are available, you know, or incapable of taking these positions. So, we don't necessarily want to post something out on a position that we can fill.
Okay. Now, I, now I don't get time for questions?
Sure.
You're at a stopping point, okay.
Sure.
So, a couple of things, one is, have we had to do any cutting on, in the arts? We haven't, I mean, so I guess what my question, let me lay back. I don't want, especially the high school one, I've shared this with you before, I really want to be careful that we're not limiting the opportunities for our students within this, in this shift. So, can you speak to maybe like, at the high school level, right, we were just talking about GT, one of the things that's available, that our GT in high schools, is that we offer AP classes, IB, and all these classes, and they, they can have smaller class sizes. And then all, things like the arts can sometimes have smaller class sizes, how are we addressing that to make sure that we're not accidentally or inadvertently impacting some of the opportunities for our students?
Yeah, so, at the high school level, there, for example, there's no arts positions that, that have been cut. You're, you're talking core areas in language, so, you know, Spanish was at, at one school, because again, the amount of teachers they have can cover the class loads of twenty-five to one that we currently have. There's a social studies, you know, position at one of the high schools, where they have, they just have an extra teacher. And it has nothing to do with the AP or any of the other small programs that are there. So yeah, there's, you know, none of our, whether it be IB or early college or, you know, Mayo, nothing's be, being affected by these. This is where there literally is an extra teacher, based on the amount of students that need the classes.
And Lamar and Mayo being quite a bit smaller than?
Yes.
Arts school in Darlington?
Yes.
I mean, was there any difficulty in trying to, to work that out, or that's, that's worked? I mean, there's, those kids at those smaller schools are still getting the opportunities that make the, you know?
Yes.
So, you were careful not to limit opportunities for this?
Absolutely. And, and again, smaller schools is, we've got to be really careful, whether it be a high school or whether it be an elementary school.
Right.
Because one teacher could make a very large difference in class size.
Exactly.
So, we're trying to be careful with that. And we also, you know, trying to make sure there's, if there's any whoopsies, that we have the ability to correct anything.
That was my next question, is how, are you going to be like, as scheduling comes about this summer, or at the end of this school year, beginning of next school year, are you going to have like, feedback from, some sort of form of feedback from your counselors and principals on scheduling, things like that, so that you can catch on to some of the, and they're not afraid to come to you, like some sort of way for them to say, like, we really like, would have preferred if, you know, this, this particular thing created a scheduling problem for us, or, or, you know, we had way more students that wanted this opportunity and they couldn't get it, or things like that, so you'll have a, a feedback mechanism for them to provide that?
It's in place every year.
Right.
It is. And, and so, you know, because you're, you're going off of projections, and so when the reality comes in, sometimes there's some changes that need to be made. But yeah, every year, we go through this process. And if there's a need for another teacher in a subject area because of the class sizes, again, you know, we don't want to see those get high, then we can react to it, you know? Yes, it's a little bit more difficult to react to it at the beginning of the school year than it is now, but, you know, we, we absolutely have done that in the past.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. Anybody else?
And then, on the revenue side, so, we're just talking a little bit about what we're hearing at the state level, and, and so, Renee, is there anything that you would want to add to the conversation as far as the circles that you've been listening to and hearing from?
As far as our tax base goes, it's a reassessment year, so we have to go through that process. There's a, there's a meeting with the State Department of South Carolina Department of Revenue, that the county has called April seventeenth, so we'll find out. And, and basically, all that does is reset the mileage, that they reassess every five years, and they, there's a rollback calculation that prevents us from having a windfall. If, if all the assessed values go way higher than they are, we don't increase our current mileage and get all that money. We, they reset it, we get credit for any new construction during the year, but I'll have to get all the figures from the county. I talked to the tax assessor today, and he said they wouldn't have it until that meeting, so. So we have that factor. Right now, I'm projecting about one point eight million dollars extra in taxes. Some of the things coming back from the State Department are, they're looking at, we, we generally get a pupil credit every year, it's five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, they're not sure, no one's said, yes, we're getting it, no one's said, no, we're not. But the people that are, are advocates for, that legislators are trying to get an answer for that. And then, once the hundred and thirty-five day ADM counts are actually official, what we've got is our projected numbers, or, or numbers from our data people, they turn it in between now and April sixteenth, then the State Department will send us, they've actually got a, it's, you know, it used to be, you could take the ADM, calculate the weighted pupil average, and base it to cost, and I could come up with pretty much what they were going to send us, and the new formula doesn't allow you to do that. But they did, you know, the entire presentation at our SCASWED conference for the State Department was thirty-eight minutes. Five people spoke for thirty-eight minutes total. It's usually a two-hour presentation, so, you know, it's a new, new group, so, they did send out a spreadsheet and say, hey, we'll be giving you some numbers to plug into this once the hundred and thirty-five day numbers are correct. So, I'm hoping that by our April work session, which would be after the April seventeenth... which would be after the April seventeenth tax meeting and after the April sixteenth State Department hundred and thirty-five day, that I'll have some of that numbers. Right now I have my crowd, they're calculating as far as salaries go, just a normal step increase for regular people. A normal, a normal step increase in our scales is two percent. Between one and a half and two percent, but then not really are. And for the teacher scales, they're still debating that. I've taught to several of my peers, some of them are looking at a percentage. Right now, there's, you know, there's only like the first twelve left steps in the bachelors and bachelors plus, where we would have to increase anything to meet the state minimum. But what we've got to do is figure out a way to give all of our teachers some sort of increase to compete with our neighbors once they decide what they're going to do. So anyway, I still use them a crystal ball. And we met with all the department heads. We'll have another round after we get some things pulled together. We met with all the principals. We answered all the questions and pulled data to get their information. When the hundred and thirty-five day count is, we'll throw those numbers into the supplements and allocations manual, and we'll all come together. So that's pretty much it. It's work in progress, but we're working on it daily, so. Any questions?
No, just one comment.
Sorry?
Just one comment, not a question.
Okay.
I would suggest very strongly that our board members who have a relationship with any of our legislators would have a real conversation with them. Because the conversation that I've been having recently, apparently they do not understand the governor's plan. And if the, if the, if his plan is to go to forty-five thousand as a base pa, as a starting salary, they don't understand that where that's going to leave us at as a competitive district. I've had that conversation with a couple of legislators, and apparently they do not understand that. I think we need to try to explain that to them. Definitely be my only, or the comment.
And I know we've had advocates out of the finance group that have gone and tried to explain it to them multiple, multiple times. They've given presentations on the floor.
Yeah, I think one of the things with the teacher pay, just to be clear, we, we don't know how much money we're going to receive over and above what we received last year for teacher pay. And I think once we know what that amount is, as Renee referred to, some people are looking at, is it, you know, can we do a percent increase? Is it a scale? Is it step? You know, all of that's to be determined, because we really just don't know how much more money we're going to receive to do that. We know we're going to receive something, but there's, there's three different plans out there, so it could be three different amounts of money. And how they calculate the plan is different as well. So I guess what I would say is that our intent is what we receive for teachers over and above what we got last year certainly is what we would be looking at. We just don't have that number today. And I don't know anybody that does, so if anybody out there is saying, you know, we're going to give every teacher this amount of raise, there's, there's no way to know that right now. Which makes it difficult, because it's, you know, in the past, we've been able to say, this is how much we were paying last year, this is what we're going to do this year. And everybody kind of knew that through this process, but unfortunately, it's just going to take a little bit longer to clarify it. And then you also heard about the revenues that Renee brought up, you know, hopefully from, you know, tax operations millage that should help us fund the non-teacher raises as well. And so, you know, we're looking very closely at all that. And in the past, we've been a little bit unclear at this time, and we're just not, because of what's going on at that state level with the funding. But, you know, we'll continue to update the board on that and certainly have these discussions in board meetings, so people have an idea of what's going on. That is the budget conversation for tonight. And then, next item is an action item.
Okay, but before we leave that budget item, I do want to say, I mean, I think all y'all will remember, last year, we kind of, as a board, sat down and did, we talked about a priority list, and we had programming that we, you know, wanted to look to fund. We don't have that this year, because we don't have the money with all the ESAR positions and rightsizing. We don't have the funds. I think there are two holdovers that you'll see. The GIFT Intellecting Program being one of them, potentially Spanish at the middle schools was something that we talked about last year, but that's the reason. I mean, if you're thinking, why didn't we go through that same process? It's because we, we don't have extra monies to work with to, in order to prioritize. Any extra monies that we're going to have are going to be going towards raises. So they will not be going programmatically, it'll be going to raises.
Action.
I mean, pretty simple, don't have the money, can't do it. So with that, we'll move on to our action item, we have personnel action item. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel action item?
May I move it, except personnel?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Need for executive session? Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Sure. Maybe that we enter into executive session, we need to discuss personnel issues, is that it?
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will go into executive.
Can we get a motion to come out?
I made a motion.
You made a motion. Sorry, time. And who seconded?
Seconded.
She.
I got it.
For you.
All right.
Did you get that, Mr. Jeffords and Mrs. Kelly?
No, it was Charles and Warren.
Okay.
I got it.
We're out of. All right, we're out of executive session. No actions were taken, no votes were taken. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.